All right, good morning everyone. I will call us to order for our June meeting of the State Board of Education. A few housekeeping items before we get into our agenda. Mr. Williamson is unable to be here this month because of some other commitments. We expect Ms. Dean will be here, but we hope is on her way. But we do have a quorum. First off, we haven't properly celebrated this new space that we're getting the joy of working in. And I, on behalf of the board, want to thank all of the folks who put hours and hours and hours into planning this and making it happen. And so, thank you all so much for that. And while it's a beautiful space, it has one thing missing, and those are the flags. And so, we now are going to, I would invite everyone to stand for the posting of the flags. And we have three members of the Troop 17 of Bryant, Arkansas, led by Assistant Scoutmaster Brian Wood, Will Owen, Matthew Wood, Braden Pierce, and then from PAC 3050 of Bryant, we have Harper Owen and Michelle Owen, who is the committee chair. So, I will ask for that.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks to you all for making that happen.
Dr. Barth, if I may, Greg, don't let Jackie get too far. Call Jackie back. So, I know that, yeah, you did. I just want to say, I don't want to shortchange this new facility. Greg, step on in, too. So, I want you all to know, because a lot of times you see state government, state agencies do projects like this, and I want you to know, we are very unique in the Department of Education in that since, I think, 1968, we have taken care of our own buildings, unlike some agencies that don't have that ability to do so. We did not ask for any funding from legislature or the governor to do this. This was done by funding that we had here, that we've accumulated over time because of the structure that we have in our finances. And I think this is a very fitting tribute to our stakeholders. Why would I say that? Well, our stakeholders being here with you all as state board members, from safety concerns, from access concerns, our old facility was certainly not what you would expect in a modern meeting room, modern meeting space with technology. So, Jackie Stafford, Greg Rogers, they worked very hard. Doug, where Doug is, I know Doug was involved, but there are a number of people, but really I want to acknowledge Jackie for being so involved in this, making sure this project happened, and the rest of the team that was so involved. Dan, from the technology side of things, I mean, there's just a lot of folks that made this happen. And I hope you all are proud of what this space is now and what we have to offer. We can bring more folks here for our meetings. We can rearrange, it's a very versatile room. And I'm very proud. So, from the Commissioner, Jackie, your folks, Greg, the construction project, everything, our compliments, thank you for your work on this. I wish we had a ribbon to cut, but we had too much to do today.
Thank you all. And I will make one quick note. On the microphones, they are on all the time, which is good and bad, Ms. Hook. So, they, when you, you need to speak kind of about at this distance, and try to be, get your mouth level with the microphone itself. If you want to kind of be sure that the microphone is away from you, turn it up, turn it down, and that will block, be more likely to block sound. If you turn it up, that captures all of the sound in the room, and that is not good. So, kind of keep it level with you, and keep your mouth just a few inches away. Is that all right? All right. All right, thank you all. Okay, we are, looking at our agenda, we have a couple of changes to make. On the action agenda this morning, we are pulling item five, is that correct? Okay. And also pulling item eight. So, items five and eight are pulled from this morning. In addition, because our Arkansas Bilinguality Award folks need to be at the governor's office at 11:30, this morning, we're going to shift up from the recognition section, item four, and also with it, the Seal of Bilinguality, since those two items are tied together. And then, we'll come back to the rest of the recognitions, and then move to our consent agenda. I have gotten from some items, on the consent agenda, I know there's some questions about items 10 and 11, and then I would also like to identify 15 for some, item 15 for some questions. Are there any other items on the consent agenda that need addressing? Okay, then, let's move to the Arkansas Bilinguality Award. And Ms. Wright, you are our presenter.
Thank you. Well, I feel privileged with this being my last meeting to get the opportunity to present this, but I do want to say, I want to share this with my fellow parting colleague, Ms. Courtney Cochran, who ensured last month that we have this conversation in a way that then let us have these action items today. So, Ms. Cochran, thank you for using the platform as Teacher of the Year, and also, please know, I share this presentation with you, and if there's anything that I neglect or that we neglect in this process, you have a huge role to play as well in this being here. But as was the charge of this state board from the work session that Ms. Cochran led us in, in the conversation, we did want to take action. And I couldn't be more humbled that one of my last acts on the State Board of Education is going to be celebrating something that came from our teachers. And this is once again a testament to our teachers. This literally was a grassroots effort, a gap that our teachers saw, both our foreign language teachers as well as our ESL teachers. And they didn't wait on anybody like good teachers. They were like, "We found a solution." And they themselves made the connections nationally to be able to bring this opportunity to Arkansas and to make it happen. But we, as a state board of education, also have the opportunity to help this go even further and make sure that even additional districts and additional students benefit. And then, with the department, with folks like Ms. Smith, who are so grateful for her leadership throughout, always, but definitely in these last two months is related to this, to really help us figure out how this becomes not just a standalone opportunity that exists, but comes embedded in how we think about our careers and credentials, and in general, how we're thinking about opportunity for our kids. So, we get to start off today with a recognition specifically for our students, an acknowledgement of the students that worked so hard for this award. I was humbled, once again, second year in a row, to be able to be the keynote speaker at a celebration where these awards were conferred, at least for the Springdale School District. But over 350 students overall in the state actually earned a seal of bilinguacy. And I really want to emphasize that word, "earned." They earned it, and they worked hard for it. And I will say, fun little side note that I haven't even gotten to share with these ladies, as a result of that keynote presentation this year, I now have one of those wonderful students interning for me, and he refuses to speak anything but Spanish to all of us. And he's not even Latino, he's Indian. And he's just, his Spanish is beautiful, and he's confusing everybody because his Spanish is just so beautiful. We're like, "No, really." So, it's, again, a testament that they really worked hard for this. So, with that, at this time, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Kilmore, and on behalf of both Arc de Sol and our Arkansas Foreign Language Teachers Association, to discuss the recognition, the process. And then, we have a student today who has agreed to be an ambassador on behalf of 350, no easy task, but to help us be able to acknowledge the 350 kids that did earn this this year. Ms. Kilmore.
So, on behalf of the Arkansas Seal of Bilinguality Committee, I just thank you so much as a board, and particularly Courtney and Maria, for all of the support, and really just the inspiration for education and for the students and for bilinguacy in Arkansas. So, as teachers and the Foreign Language Teachers Association, and Arc de Sol, teachers of English to speakers of other languages, it's our duty and it's our responsibility to prepare our language students to not just go travel to other countries, but to use language to save lives as first responders, to comfort families and social workers, and to learn to live and work alongside speakers of the 84 different languages that Arkansas has, from 30 different countries. It's our duty to prepare these students, and it's very easy to see that we're excited about something that we've worked so hard for, but their real passion and their real drive comes from our students and our student achievement, that they see and recognize the value of the language learning and what that is going to do for Arkansas. So, we have a representative, and I'm going to let her introduce herself, so I don't mispronounce her name. She is representing the 350 faces of Arkansas students who have received, as they earned, the Arkansas Seal of Bilinguality to date. After today, we are hoping to see an explosion of seal recipients across the state of Arkansas. So, it's really humbling for us as a committee to see the face of these students. So, I'm going to turn it over to her.
Hello, good morning. My name is Landra Tamarana, and I'm a student, or I was a student at Harvard High School. And I just wanted to thank you guys for allowing me to speak on behalf of my classmates and other students, and for the future recipients of this award. I wanted to let you guys know that this award is important to me because I grew up in a Spanish-speaking household, and I've always somehow knew in me that I was bilingual. I knew that, or, you know, students that speak another language at home and also learn English or any other language, you know, we know that we're bilingual. But like, this award to me, like, made me officially know that I am bilingual in terms of, because when I'm bilingual, I know I can speak English and I can, I have Spanish, and I can hear it. But whenever I get this award given, that we are proficient in two languages, it lets me know that I can read, write, hear, and, you know, do all of these literate things. So, that's why I wanted you guys to know that. That is very important as a student, because, you know, we're always like, "Well, are we actually bilingual?" And, you know, so this makes us, like, feel that warmth that we are officially, you know? And, you know, it's great. And I wanted to say that it's also important to other students around, because there are many like myself, that we just, we just know that we can speak more than one language, and having this award makes us, you know, feel great in terms of, you know, we can put it in our resumes and our jobs, and we can learn new skills. It just makes us official. You know, it's great. It's not just, we think we're bilingual, we know we're bilingual in proficiency level. And then, it's also important to the state, because like I said, in our resumes, it looks great, you know, we can speak this language and, you know, not only translate it, but we can, like, get it across, because we have the proficiency level to do it. So, I just wanted to say thank you for listening and to keep making this great award go, so that many students can feel how I feel, and you guys respecting our voice and everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, with that, yes, please. Do I say something else, or do we? No, I think at this point, we want to recognize, sometimes we take a photo, I'm afraid, unlike some of our awards, we don't have something specific to give you, and it was more what you gave the students, but we appreciate the opportunity to be able to join in in this celebration, and applaud you for your efforts, but applaud the 350 students for whom you're standing, and thank you as well for our teachers in being able to be part of this recognition celebration of what you all accomplished. But now, to respond, so we'll move from recognition then to action, and then, and to respond to the charge of our young recipient here, let's make sure that this is available to other students. With that, with the indulgence of this board, I would like to read a proposed resolution for your consideration, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for us being able to swap up orders and consider this action item. As you all will file in your board materials, the Arkansas State Board of Education, whereas the Arkansas State Board of Education acknowledges the Arkansas Seal of Bilinguality for recognizing students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation, and whereas the Arkansas State Board of Education acknowledges that the Arkansas Seal of Bilinguality is available to any district, school, teacher, and high school world language student in Arkansas, and whereas the Arkansas State Board of Education supports participation in the global economy, as well as the diversity and advantages a bilingual population brings to businesses and the service industry, and whereas the Arkansas State Board of Education believes the Arkansas Seal of Bilinguality will help students demonstrate their abilities without question to universities and employers. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that we, the members of the Arkansas State Board of Education, endorse the Arkansas Seal of Bilinguality for students in grades nine through 12, who demonstrate proficiency in English and one or more other languages. So, with that, Ms. Kilmore, if you'd like to offer a little bit more context in regards to this resolution, then we'll entertain questions from the board. And when appropriate, Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
All right, thank you.
So, I just think the endorsement and acknowledgement of the Arkansas Seal of Bilinguality sends a very strong message to teachers and students in language classes across Arkansas, that what they're doing means something, and it means something outside of the classroom. It has great relevance and great value as our students enter college, as they enter the workforce, and just really, as they strive to be better human beings. Language is the building blocks of human connections, and that's what we strive to do for our students, and the Seal of Bilinguality really recognizes the human connection that language makes, and gives that great value and acknowledgement.
All right, any questions?
Do you have an example of what it looks like?
We have a certificate right now, that we have spoken with Stacy Smith, and she has agreed that on our certificate, we can have the Department of Ed logo, along with the logo for the Arkansas Foreign Language Teachers Association and the Arc de Sol Association.
Okay, so it won't be on their diploma?
It's, right now, that would be a district-level decision. We have a digital seal that we will pass along, they'll be able to download the file, and they can put that on diplomas if a district wants to do that. But what we issue is the certificate that kind of leads a pathway to the actual seal and what the district chooses to do.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Wright? I believe you have, you moved with this resolution?
I do, I have a motion. Seeing no additional questions, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve this resolution.
Right, is there a second? Second by Mr. Black. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Congratulations, and thank you all.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, where I know that we don't have something physical to get them, I was wondering if me, you, and, oh, perfect, if we might be able to take a picture with them with this resolution as well, so that their students can celebrate, as well as the other teachers that worked so hard for this.
Thank you so much. This makes Arkansas the 34th state in the nation to have an official seal of bilinguacy. We're so excited.
And I'm going to encourage Ms. Cochran to also help us photobomb this.
All right, thank you all so much, and safe journeys. We have several other recognitions this morning. Next, Ms. Linda Carter has served at the department for 50 years, and of course, we want to recognize folks who have put in such a large part of their lives, dedication to the students of this state. Commissioner Key.
Thank you, Dr. Barth. Dr. Saunders, could you join me there at the podium? So, Dr. Barth and the board, it's an honor today for me to honor one of our team members. You know, this building was named for Dr. Arch Ford. Linda Carter was hired by Dr. Arch Ford in 1968. We are celebrating 50 years of service to the Department of Education. She has served in a number of capacities, but we know her as the person who kept Jim Boardman out of trouble for many years. Those of you that know Mr. Boardman understand what I'm saying. But here's something that he said about her. He said, "If anyone in the department scored higher than Ms. Carter on her performance evaluation, on their performance evaluation, then I rated her too low, because she is the best there is." As I mentioned, she was employed April 16, 1968 by Dr. Ford. She has seen a lot of shifting and change here at the department, especially in the area of technology. And she has very strong technology and internet skills, expert in building customer and vendor databases, excels in planning, goal-setting, and organizational skills. This is my favorite part, says Linda takes customer satisfaction very seriously. Here are some things that she has done, accomplishments here at the department. She assisted in the research and compilation of data for the development of the ADE Writing Style Guide. When was that? Oh, yeah. Coordinator and consultant to the Governor's Task Force on Arkansas School Funding and Computing, Analyzing, and Editing Data Used to Develop the School Funding Formula. Charter member of the Interdepartmental Relations Committee. Chairperson of the ADE Catastrophic Leave Committee for approximately six years. Chairperson of the ADE, this may be the most important duty, ADE Christmas Deck Out Your Door Contest. And responsible for securing funding and sponsoring ADE elaborate Skill Path Training for all of ADE Administrative Support Staff for several years. She was born in North Little Rock, Arkansas, graduated from high school, and attended Capital City Business College. And before coming here, she was employed at Flander Smith College. She has a son, Kevin, and a daughter, Cynthia, is a grandmother, and in her spare time, enjoys traveling, attending church, and shopping. And she is the most, one of the most stylish members of our team. And that goes for cars, too. She loves nice cars. We are very proud to have team members like Linda. And Dr. Saunders, if you could help me, we are going to award her this memento of her 50 years of excellence to Linda Carter in appreciation for your service and professionalism. Come on up here. Arkansas Department of Education pin with a ruby. Not too many people get rubies, but the ruby there where the state of Arkansas is, and certainly well-deserving of that. And then, a certificate of recognition for 50 years of service, and a letter from Governor Hutchinson. And let me read this letter. "Congratulations on celebrating 50 years with the Arkansas Department of Education. Thank you for dedicating 50 years of expertise and service to the state of Arkansas. The time and energy you have devoted to the state is a testament to your selfless character and diligence. For five decades, Arkansas has benefited from your steadfast work with the Department of Education. Your dedication to excellence in your work and your many roles is remarkable. As governor, I commend you for your commitment to this great state. As you celebrate your 50th anniversary with the Department of Education, you can take pride in knowing you have helped children and adults alike across the state of Arkansas. Congratulations and best wishes as you celebrate your accomplishment with your colleagues and friends. Sincerely, Asa Hutchinson."
To Commissioner Key, Dr. Saunders, and the state board, excuse me, give me a minute. I don't get this way very often. I thank each of you for this recognition. When I started to work for the Department of Education, I started to work for a couple of years. Well, one ran into two, and three, and four, and five, so I've been here 50 years, and I started when I was 16, can you believe that? But it has been an honor and a privilege to work with an agency that is dedicated to helping the children of our state be better. And I so appreciate this honor and recognition. Thank you so much to all of you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Carter, for all your years of service. We, next up, have, we move in a very different direction, and Kyrie Williamson is here. And Commissioner Key, would you talk a little bit about her work?
Dr. Barth, I wanted to introduce you to Kyrie Williamson. She is a student in the Jacksonville-North Pulaski School District. She is a published author of an award-winning book, and she has that to show you today. I met Kyrie two, three weeks ago, and she, she is unlike any nine-year-old that I have ever met in her, the voice that she has found based on her experiences to help other students deal with the issue of bullying. And that's why she wrote her And that's why she wrote her book. So Akari, I'm going to ask you to just tell them a little bit about your story, okay?
Good morning.
Good morning.
How is everybody doing? Even the people back there, even though I can't see them. My name is Akari Lynn Williamson, and I am the author of Twinkle. My book is about a star that runs away from home because she is being teased for being small. As she is on Earth, she meets Alia, her friend, and Alia teaches her some valuable life lessons about how to stop the bullies.
This is her book, and she also had developed a coloring book to go with, to accompany her book, so that students not only get to read about Twinkle, but also get to help develop the story through using their own artistic abilities and creativity. And talk about, tell us about the awards that you won. Where have you been able to go because of writing this book?
I have been able to go to Washington, DC, an all-paid trip to get the Nana, Nana, Nana. It was at the No Hero Bullying Award. And all thanks to my Nana. My Nana is the reason why I have my book right here. Thank you, Nana. My speech.
You cut her off, Commissioner.
According to StopBullying.gov, bullying is an unwanted aggressive behavior among school-aged children that involves a real or perceived power imbalance. The behavior is repeated over time. Bullying includes actions such as making threats, spreading rumors, attacking someone physically or verbally, and excluding someone from a group on purpose. I wrote Twinkle because I was being bullied. Twinkle is kind of me because at home, at school, I get bullied for being small. On the days that I was bullied, I would go home and type on the computer and put all my feelings into fictional characters. I believe Twinkle would help someone who is in the same situation by letting them know that they don't have to care what other people think. Also, just because they talk bad about you doesn't mean you should talk sorry, or doesn't mean you should talk bad about them. At my school, they talk about your clothes and your shoes. They shouldn't judge a person by the way that they look. I also believe when others bully you, they wish in some way that they could be you or be like you, and that they cannot always express themselves. Kids who are often bullied try to tell, but they sometimes go unheard, which causes kids to become scared and afraid of telling someone. When this happens, the bullying continues. What do we do if we know someone who is being bullied, or if we know someone who is a bully? Do we do nothing, or do we speak up? I think we should get kids from our schools and communities, and we should ask them if they are being bullied or not. If they say yes, then we should say to them, "It is okay to be yourself," and stand up to them and say, "You do not scare me, and you do not tell me what to do. I can make my own choices. Although I am small, I may seem big in the eyes of a bully, I will continue to inspire people and share my story. What will you do?" I'm not done. I also want to say that I want their voices to be heard because bullying goes to the next level, where they think suicidal thoughts. And so, I want to save as many lives as I can.
And where can we find your book, if someone wants to buy it?
On Amazon, and Barnes &amp; Noble, and the Hearns Bookstore. Yeah, the Hearns Bookstore, and I think that's it.
Okay. Akari, you make me proud to be Commissioner when I know that there are students like you out there who are making a difference and saving lives. Thank you. And Nana, thank you.
Akari, I just want to thank you. I was bullied when I was a bit older than you are, and it made school a pretty miserable place. And the way in which you are making, have this goal of making school the kind of accepting, welcoming place it should be for all students, is just a tremendous gift. And so, I want to thank you for your service to your fellow students and to yourself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And our final set of recognitions on what's been a really celebratory morning are the Principals of the Year. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Mike Burton.
Good morning, Dr. Barth, Commissioner Key, and the other members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here today representing AAEA. Dr. Richard Abernathy, our Executive Director, is out of town, and he does send his regret for not being able to be here today. Three of our constituent groups honored their Principals of the Year earlier this spring at their school districts. Our secondary principals, our middle-level principal group, and our elementary principal group. And actually, this is a national process. The nominations and applications are sent to the National Association for each one of these groups. And the reason for that is because each Arkansas winner is in the running for the National Principal of the Year. So, once they go to the National Association, they are then returned to the state association for review and scoring, and then selection. So I'm here today to recognize this year's winner. Before I introduce the High School Principal of the Year, I would like to point out a few things that were in her application and letters of support. One is an emphasis on student voice. You could see that all through her application. She involved students in staff meetings and board meetings, and even in monthly building leadership team meetings. She involved them very extensively on the School of Innovation application process. She seeks their input and truly cares what they want and what they think for their school. Matter of fact, one student wrote, "Principal York is the district's voice for the voices of students." She wants her students to be prepared after graduation, so there is an emphasis on career planning and countless opportunities for tutoring and other interventions. One of her teachers wrote that she's always supportive of teachers, whether it's finding the right PD to address a certain issue, writing a grant, or implementing a new instructional strategy. And she's been a great mentor for young teachers. I found it interesting that in today's interest in school safety at the height that it is, that she serves on the Southwest Arkansas Counseling and Mental Health Board, so she understands the importance of these services for kids. She is a designated Master Principal. And there is one thing unique, that as far as we can find in our history, this is the first time it ever happened, and that in 2010, she was an Elementary Principal of the Year for the state of Arkansas. So it's my pleasure to introduce the Arkansas High School Principal of the Year for 2018. She's the Principal of Ashdown High School, Ms. Kay York.
This is an award that I'm very humbled by. Yes, I was the elementary, and I worked really hard at that job. When I moved to high school, I was asked to come, and I thought, "Oh, gosh, what am I going to do?" But the students are the ones that I had taught previously. I'd given them their kindergarten diploma, and I've ended up the last three years giving high school students their diploma as well, the same ones. This is a job that is not done by myself. As y'all know, you have supported so many things and so many initiatives that I've wanted to do in high school. And with applying for the School of Innovation, there's things that we're being allowed to do now that we need to do for students. We're getting them career choices. Y'all have provided so many professional development opportunities for myself, the Arkansas Leadership Academy. The AAEA has provided many steps in my journey, in my education years, 39 years of working with students in the state of Arkansas, throughout the state. I've met very many people that you have put in place to help. There's people here in this boardroom right now that I call on almost weekly. The phone is always answered. I know that's one thing Commissioner Key wanted to make sure of when he came in. I have called last week before I left my office, or Monday, I guess, immediately talked to Barbara Means. I can talk to people anytime I call, and if they're in a meeting, they'll call me right back. I appreciate your work and what y'all have done, because this award is not about me, it's about what the state does for teachers and support our administrators, and what we're doing for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. York.
Our middle-level Principal of the Year is Jeff Wasson. He's the Principal of Creekside Middle School in Benton. He's not here today. He is working on becoming Dr. Wasson, and he's in class today, and I think it's a very critical piece of the process. I told him he probably could get a note from Chairman Barth or Commissioner Key, but I don't think he even wanted to ask his professors if he could miss today. But I did want to tell you a few things about Mr. Wasson. He opened Creekside Elementary or Middle School this year, but in other schools where he's been principal, they've been designated as an Arkansas Diamond School. They've been awarded Schools to Watch designation by the National Forum to Accelerate Middle Level Reforms, been recognized for high achievement numerous times by the Office of Educational Policy. He is also a designated Master Principal. One of his teachers said he has great expectations for his staff and students, and makes certain that support systems are in place to meet the many needs of all students. His superintendent said he is a leader of leaders. He has led the development of an administrative team, leadership team in Bentonville that focuses on issues that truly matter to students. And we did recognize Mr. Wasson at his school and at the Benton, a meeting of the Benton School Board earlier this spring.
And he did call me a couple of days ago and voiced his real regret that he could not be here today.
I'm just curious, his professor wasn't Dr. Gooden today, was it?
Well, I'm not sure.
Okay, just checking, just checking to see if Dr. Gooden was...
If he was anxious or worried about asking to not be there, it could have been Dr. Gooden. Our Elementary Principal of the Year is also not here. She's in Colorado today. It's Mrs. Stephanie Worthy, who is Principal of Spring Hill Elementary School in the Greenbrier School District. She had received numerous awards at Spring Hill and other schools in the Greenbrier School District through the Arkansas School Recognition Program. Her schools have received awards, were being in the top five and top 10 percent in performance, and twice, her schools have been in the top 10 percent in performance and the top 10 percent in growth the same year, which is rather hard to do. She is also a designated Master Principal. Throughout her application, references to PLC and RTI were throughout. If someone, if an educator calls our office and asks, "Who do they know, where do they need to go to see a professional learning community the way it should be working?", one of the first schools will say is, "You need to go to Greenbrier, either go to Greenbrier Middle School or Spring Hill Elementary School." Ms. Worthy has implemented an after-school music program for low socioeconomic students in collaboration with the UCA Music Department. According to Ms. Worthy, this program is making huge impact on students that have in the past had little interest in school. This is probably the best testimony. This is what one of her teachers said about her. "I am honored to work with someone who inspires me every day to be the best I can be and to make a difference in the lives of children." And a parent in Ms. Worthy's school said, "Ms. Worthy is extraordinary," and all that in caps. Knowing she is a great leader with integrity, we know that she will make the best decisions that impact our children's future as well as keeping them safe. So it's been my honor to present our Principals of the Year. I'm sorry that two of them can't be here, but I wouldn't turn down a trip to Colorado myself. And I probably, if I was working on my doctorate, I'd probably make sure I'd be in class. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burton.
I'd like to make a comment about Ms. Worthy and the entire Greenbrier District. They did a pilot project a few years ago with one class, kindergarten, first, second, up through there, to try and see if the science of reading was in fact making a difference. When they found out that it was, they expanded it to all of the grade levels. They have like three or four of each grade level. And so, I think it is no surprise to any of us, those of us who are teachers and educators in any regard, that in fact, they got this kind of result. And hopefully, this will inspire all the other districts and all the other schools and principals to realize the importance of getting this going sooner than later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We are now down to, first off, thanks for all the celebration this morning, because it touched so many parts of education in this state. We are now down to the consent agenda, and I've been asked, pulled three things, or I pulled one, but I have questions, comments about one, and I know Ms. Newton has comments on 10 and 11, so I'll turn it over to you.
If you could, Dr. Owa, could you speak a little bit more and maybe give us a little bit more insight on the critical shortage areas, maybe if there were any surprises in there? Are you seeing any improvements over the years in areas that are of particular concern more than others? And then, what impact are you seeing that the new licensures would have maybe on some of these critical shortages?
Good morning. Thank you for that question, Mrs. Newton. And we have started to see a shift, or the enrollment in our educator preparation providers. And I should introduce myself, Jeremy Owa, Assistant Commissioner, Educator Effectiveness. The increase or the enrollment has leveled out, so it's not a decline anymore. And so, we've started to see a rise in the special education. And so we've started to see a rise in the special education programs when the additional programs of studies were developed and implemented. And so we've started to see a shift, but one of the things that we wanted to focus on, and we did have some surprises, and Dr. Savidio will cover those, but we started to really look at the types of, or the content area...
Brian Cornish.
That were, the programs of study that where the teachers were enrolling in, and started to have discussions with the educator preparation providers about really looking and paying attention to the shortage areas so that they will meet those needs. And so as we launched our Teach Arkansas campaign, we also, and I just received approval to announce that, we're looking at shifting the reimbursement of assessment licensure from one area to the shortage areas. So starting, so once, hopefully, the critical shortage area will be approved, and then we'll send out a commissioner memo notifying our educators, starting July 1st, when they add the endorsement area for one of the critical shortage areas, that we will reimburse their licensure assessment to kind of aid in meeting that need as we move forward. But Dr. Savidio will cover the other part of your question about the surprises that we had.
Good morning, Dr. Barth, and members of the chair, members of the board. In terms of surprises, we've, for the last few years, we've calculated the shortage areas the same way that we have each year. This year, I think the fact that there were, there was a greater number of subject areas that were considered shortage areas, and I think that was the surprise, that we, however, we have a, in the calculation, I don't know if you noticed, the way we do the calculation is basically we take a standard of 100, apply a calculation using a variety of factors, and then if they're less than 100, they're considered a shortage area, and more than 100, not a shortage area. What we found was a very large number of subjects that were between 90 and 110, and that was the first time we saw that. I mean, so in the past, we would pretty much had a distinct few subject areas that were significantly below 100. And this year, we started to see sort of like a spread out, and that's, it's almost indicating that there are going to be less shortage areas because we're starting to see more people enrolled in programs, we're starting to see fewer people retiring, fewer people that are teaching out of field, those kinds of things. So I think that was, that was the surprise, and in a strange way, we ended up with more shortage areas, but it's almost an indication that they're starting to level out, starting to equal. We're not seeing large differences between the areas anymore.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions, Ms. Reith?
I do have another question. Just reviewing your ALP district count, I couldn't help but notice how high they are up in northwest Arkansas. Is that just because the districts are so large, or?
Yes, if you're talking about...
Is there another rationale, yeah?
If you're talking about numbers of teachers that are on ALPs, clearly, there are going to be more of them in school districts that are much larger.
But nothing that gives you concern proportionally compared to other parts of the state? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else there? Thank you, sir. Next, Ms. McLaughlin, I think, Ms. Newton had a question about the DUMS progress report. DUMS is on the line? Okay.
I just, first of all, want to thank Superintendent Gregg for the detail that was in this report, because it was very insightful, and it led to some questions that I had, have for the department, looking at their 1240 teacher waivers, it said they had 18 1240 teachers, and why, I figured at 22 percent had already completed certification, and only 11 percent left the field, which was great. But the thing that jumped out to me was that it said 50 percent of those 18 were waiting to pass the math portion of the praxis. What I wanted to know is, as a state, are we doing anything to support districts and cooperatives to help the 1240 teachers get through the praxis, especially the math portion? And that might be Dr. Owa and Steph.
Yes.
Okay.
Jeremy Owa, Educator Effectiveness.
I'm the phone.
I guess it's me every time we call in. Yes, we are, we've launched our licensure assessment sessions where we're meeting at the different regions of the state to give them license, assessment techniques, how to prepare for it, what to look for, also how to address test anxiety. And so we're providing that support as we move forward, and we have a team who actually have started to meet with district officials and their teachers who are on 1240 waivers to talk about life after 1240, so the next steps to become licensed.
Okay, great. And are those trainings going through the co-ops? How are you getting to the teachers?
Yes, those trainings are happening. We're hosting them at the co-op, and then, of course, for the central Arkansas school districts, we're hosting them here at the department.
At the department, okay. Thank you, thank you. And again, thank you to DUMS for the detail that was in that report.
Anything else?
Dr. Barth, just to say that evidently, folks that are joining in on the phone are having trouble hearing the folks from the podium, so if you're speaking from the podium, get a little closer, or maybe Dan, we can turn them up a little bit, maybe? No? It's up as high as it can go.
Get close to it.
Okay, just get close to it. Thank you.
Is that all you need?
All right. Ms. Boyd, the...
Yes, I do have some.
Oh, Ms. Zuck.
I'm sorry. The concern I have is, once again, you know, we get teachers out of higher ed and even the ones that go through the traditional programs, and then the principals are having to do a lot of PD to get them up to speed to know how to teach. And now, and we have another reporter that's included, that shows how many teachers coming fresh out of those institutions are not able to pass the praxis, and now we are having to PD people to help them pass the praxis. So at some point, you've got to wonder why parents and/or the student themselves are spending so much money in higher ed if they can't pass the praxis on the way out. And I don't know about other professions, but I can't think it's unique to education. So, you know, this is frustrating for me as an educator. I got out of an institution and had to have somebody help me learn how to teach. So I just think it is unfortunate that we keep leaning on the principals and the co-ops to help people get to the point where they can teach when they really should be spending more and more of their time teaching the students who are there who are trying to learn. And I don't expect you to be able to defend that.
But can I...
You may, you may.
Provide some context, and definitely understand your sentiments, Mrs. Zuck. One of the things that I think that should be noted is the change in mentoring, and so now that teachers are receiving mentoring, novice teachers for three years, with the partnership of educators, our educational cooperatives, they're able to really develop their pedagogy, the art of teaching. And then, Mrs. Smith and I from Learning Services have started to really look at how we can partner and cross-divisionally work and provide the content as well as the pedagogy from our department to really address the support that we're providing our practicing teachers. We've also started to look at, you all had a presentation, I believe, last month on Praxis Note, which is going to be an option, hopefully, for individuals who may have test anxiety with the traditional way of assessing their content knowledge or pedagogical knowledge. And so we're looking at different options of really how to support teacher candidates, but as well as our teachers who are in the field educating our students now. And, but I really feel like the mentoring, and just from the feedback that we've received from our novice teachers, that the mentoring, the support that's being provided by our educational cooperatives have really been beneficial for their first year of teaching.
Right, and I do appreciate that, and I know that you are working hard and getting it done. It's higher ed that I'm frustrated with, not ADE.
And we're definitely communicating with them. We have a monthly meeting where we share things with them and share the data that we have, and just continue having those ongoing conversations on how we can better prepare our students. And we're looking at training such as culturally responsiveness, so that all of our teachers are prepared to meet the needs of all of our students wherever they may land in their teaching profession around the state. So we're looking at the types of training and professional learning opportunities that we can provide teacher candidates while they're in the program of study, but also practicing teachers as well.
Dr. Barth, can I say just one comment? I think that we also need to have a little bit, that we need to understand some of the ones that are having trouble with the praxis, especially the math portion. Many of these teachers are ones that have had a degree for several years, they've already been out of school for several years, and math especially, if you don't use some of the topics every day, you forget. I think if I was to hand some of you a math test this morning, your level of anxiety would probably go pretty high. And so, so, you know, we need to have a little bit of understanding of some of those that are having trouble, is because, not because of any lack on their part, it's just because of being away from it from several years, and it takes time to get some of those skills back. And not just time, but support to get some of those skills back. And that was where the direction of my question was going, was what support are we giving those teachers? Because I don't have any doubt that some of them are great teachers, but, you know, it just, it just needs that skill to come back, and it needs a little help. So that was the direction for my question.
And Mrs. Newton, to your statement, one of the things that we tell the teacher candidates as they prepare is that, you know, because of that, because it's been several years that have elapsed, that they need to go back and visit those textbooks for that particular grade level that they're preparing for. Because if you really look at it, you know, they, many of them have had college algebra, but really, they need to focus, if they're obtaining that math, mathematics licensure for A, they need to study the content for that grade level. And so those are the types of tips that we give the teacher candidates as they prepare.
Great, thank you. Ms. Reith?
Yeah, Dr. Barth, I just want to make notes, since we're on the topic of, or this item was DUMS, and review of DUMS 1240 waivers, I just want to point to, as you all can see there in Mr. Gregg's description, and commend the DUMS school district. A lot of times, we get questions that are in terms of what is the state going to do about teacher salaries? What is the state going to do about retention and recruitment? And as you see here, you know, not every solution is a state's solution, and sometimes the best solutions are local solutions. And I just want to point to the folks in that district approving a three-mil increase, limited to raising teacher salaries, working within the community for affordable housing. That's one of the issues that we hear frequently from the Delta Regions and the South Region about the, you know, housing not being available. So I would commend Mr. Gregg and his team and that board for being very proactive in this effort, and I really think that with what they're doing and the partnership that we have and work that's going through the co-op, five years from now, we're going to have a totally different conversation about the level of effectiveness in the teaching and their ability to staff in that region. And I would encourage others to look at DUMS as, hey, this is something we can do as well.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was struck by that as well, and it's truly exceptional. There aren't many cases where a millet has been really based on human capital, developing human capital. It's a really great model, and I think that other districts in similar situations really need to learn from that lesson in terms of how that was carried out, how it was effectively messaged, because I think we all know from serving on this board that, yes, buildings matter enormously, and there are some building challenges out there, but it's really the biggest crisis in education in Arkansas is human capital. And I think that message, so I think that DUMS does have some things to teach other districts in the state. I'm glad you mentioned that. Okay. All right, then, the final item was, thank you, Ms. Boyd, on the Quest Charter, Quest Academy of Palm Bluff Non-Renewal, I just, a couple of things. First off, I think it's important that we not bury changes like this in a consent agenda. I think it's a very important change, but I also wanted to see what lessons there were learned from the Quest experience, from Ms. Boyd's perspective, that might be helpful as we kind of consider challenges facing charters. Anything?
Thank you, Dr. Barth. Alexandra Boyd, Director of Charter Schools. In the Quest Palm Bluff closure, there's some logistical things that we learned. One of those is that our rules don't account very well for a voluntary non-renewal, which is one of the reasons why this agenda item appears on your consent agenda. We are currently revising our rules so that it's captured better and follows some of the same procedures as a revocation in terms of notification and those requirements. So that was one logistical thing in our office that we uncovered from this. As far as lessons learned in Quest Palm Bluff, I don't, we have not had extensive conversations about that as an office or with the charter management organization itself. Since January, we've been working really hard together to make sure that students are placed, and make sure that we redistribute the assets in a proper way amongst other public schools. So that is something I can report to you on in the future, and if there's anything in particular you'd like to know, I can try to figure that out for you.
Well, you began to answer my other question in terms of the notification process for parents, and do you feel like that was effective?
I think it was handled, I think it was handled well. We, again, we couldn't, we couldn't require them to do it at a certain time, but they notified parents on February 2nd, which was before lottery season, and they worked very well with the parents to get students placed, and they've even extended the employment of their registrar, or the person who holds that position, throughout the end of July to make sure the students who aren't placed as of yet will be placed by the time August gets here.
Great, thanks, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that, Commissioner?
I would just add too, I think this shows, reaffirms the difficulty with a middle school model, you know, and it's been a struggle. You all know, as you've watched through the years, and just, it's hard, and the, we've learned some things, I think, you know, from a facility standpoint to the, you know, just the issues with what do you do with middle school kids once you get them and they're as far behind as some of these students were. So it's a learning process, but I want to express appreciation to responsive ed, because they were very forthright when they came and said, look, this, we're not helping this situation right now. We think it's best that we refocus in some other areas. So, but as Dr. Boyd said, it is different for us, because this is new territory with voluntary, just giving up a charter. So we'll learn from that and update our procedures accordingly.
Thank you.
All right. All right, if there are no other comments or questions, then I would invite a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Reith, second by Dr. Hill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, great. The first three action items are Arkansas Better Chance items, and of course, Ms. McKinney is here.
The first agenda that I have, our first action item I have, is the consideration of the Arkansas Better Chance Renewal Grant applications. This is something that we present to the board each year for the upcoming school year. This does not include all of them, because there were approximately 10 to 15 programs that we're working with in regards to their audit. And until we get that cleared, then we are trying to, we will be bringing another group in July.
We've seen items like this regularly. Are there any questions?
I did have a question, oh, excuse me. I did have a question about the Loroc School District. Was there a time in the Loroc School District when students who didn't meet the... Was there a time in the Little Rock School District when students who didn't meet the, I think there's like eight or nine points of criteria for attending, when the student was able to attend, who did not meet all of that criteria? Or, I mean, at least one of that criteria? Because I have, let's see, two, two great nieces and great nephew, several who would not have met the poverty. So, but they went to pre-K in the Little Rock School District. So is that still available for everyone, or is it just available for those who meet one of the criteria?
It's my understanding that there are, there are a number of programs across the state, of which Little Rock is one of those, where they allow non-ABC eligible children to attend. And it really depends on the capacity of the facilities that they have available. And they use other funding resources to assist with that effort. They do not access ABC funds for the non-ABC children.
So if it's not an ABC slot, it doesn't have to meet one of the criteria?
That's correct. Now, they do integrate the children altogether. So it's mixed classrooms, which is nice because you do not know where they fit. I mean, funding is irrelevant.
And I know you all must be pleased to find out that we're what, 18th in the nation in the quality and the number of pre-K?
Yes.
And all the children who are below the poverty line, there's a slot for them. So a lot of really good things going on with pre-K, and we enjoy being a partner with DHS.
Well, I appreciate that so very much. And I just have to brag because I found, what I was talking to the grandmother about when Akiri was up here talking about her book, I was asking, was she in pre-K? And she was, actually. And more than likely, it was an ABC child. So that's exciting to see. I mean, I'd like to say she had a first good start because that was incredible.
Okay. And also, you know the numbers, and you see them, read the paper, just like we do, the number of third graders who are not reading. And we've had pre-K, like over a billion dollars in the last decade spent on pre-K. We are addressing the needs of every child whose parents will allow them to go that meet the criteria. So do you all have any theories or investigations or research that you're doing to find out, is it the quality of the pre-K program? Is it the lack of alignment with kindergarten? Is it a K2 problem, or all of the above?
I think we have good alignment with the kindergarten. Because when we revised our early childhood standards, we made sure that there was a link of Department of Ed representation and people that work in public ed to be a part of that discussion. So I feel real strong that the link is there on the standards. I think that a number of children that come from low-income families enter our pre-K services at a disadvantage. And it takes a lot of effort, energy, and constant work. It's not only about the child, but it's about the parent too. And the unfortunate thing is not having as many probably resources to try to focus on the parents. So, excuse me.
I understand that.
But I think that there's been a lot of effort made to try to address the needs for the parents. We're seeing more children coming in with social-emotional issues and very challenging behaviors. And I think the effort of trying to focus on the mental health piece of this is very pertinent to your question.
I know the research that is often quoted as a generalized acceptance, but in fact, it was a very small piece of research. They did in fact have wraparound service. They did have whole child. They did do home visits. They did have parents involved. And those were the ones that got the numbers that people like to quote. But in places where that type of wraparound, that type of involvement, that type of almost taking those 20 kids as a part of your life for an entire year, and the community doing their share too, the, a lot of what's quoted is not in fact going to happen just from having a child in pre-K who really comes without the language and comes without the support and maybe hungry and mental health problems, not so much sometimes of the child, but of the family. So I do appreciate the work you all are doing, and I'm thrilled that Arkansas is the top third in the nation in one of these areas. That's great.
Thank you.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve this set of grants?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Zuck, second by Ms. Reith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Second item is the funding targeting foster care.
May we reflect back to that first item? I should have pointed out, on the very last page of the renewal grants, is a list of the contracts that we also fund through the ABC funding. And I included it as part of the renewal. And these are programs, are services that assist to do the training for staff across the state, in some cases provide assistance to the teachers on dealing with mental health or social-emotional issues. And it's a variety of different contracts that we work with. And I should have pointed that out, so I apologize for that.
Do we need to approve that separately, or?
That would be nice.
Okay. So we just in that previous vote approved the 95-plus million in placements for students, but these are the contracts for those entities that are part of the support in professional development.
And who trains the people who do the training?
We work with the, like with the University of Arkansas. It's with the early childhood group that does, that provides the teacher training and teacher education. Same thing with Arkansas State University. Then we have an arrangement with UAMS with various, like we work with the psychiatry part of UAMS on helping us with social-emotional and providing training and strategies to teachers on how to deal with children of challenging behavior. I mean, there are, like, the UAMS also works, the tips is parenting strategies for programs to take, how to interact and involve the parent in the education of their children. So each one of these have various professionals that have been well-trained to deal with the matter. I know that many of these are up for reevaluation, and we are in the process of assessing before we put it out for a new bid for procurement, that we take into account other needs that are, that we need to make sure the training that's being provided is truly hitting what we need.
Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion on the contracts.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Reith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move down to item two, which is the foster care payments.
When I came earlier in the year, I presented the details that ABC, we, like, the renewal grants that you just approved for next year, within their funded numbers, they know that accepting children that come to their door in foster care, they would be a priority to serve. But we have children throughout the year that come to us, and I brought that to you and said that we would like to allow additional funding to provide for that 21st child in a classroom, as long as that classroom could support it. So that our foster care children throughout the year, as they experience that shifting from their home into another location, that they could receive the necessary quality services. And so we have, the list that I have provided to you are the additional children that we need to get approval to allow for the funding over and beyond their approved amount. And so we, through the year, there were about 268 children that were served in foster care and ABC. And then we had an additional 32 children throughout the year after I received that approval, that we were able to service that 21st child.
Any questions? Ms. Newton?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I want to commend you and thank you for this because I can tell you that this makes a difference in the lives of these children. It makes a difference in the lives of the families that during that first difficult transition time, this is something that those foster families don't have to worry about how to get a child in a quality pre-K. And thank you for doing this, and it is something that is a tremendous help to those families and especially to those children.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Is that a motion?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Zuck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. And then finally, the third item is the remaining funding from this year.
At the end of the year, or after all the payments for the children have been sent out to the programs, we look at those programs who may not have accessed all their funding. And when I say that, we have some programs who accept children on a sliding fee scale, which means that money remaining is funding that is left over, that we can look at diverting or redirecting to another cause. So between that, and then we also have programs that will say, we're unable to fulfill our enrollment of 100, and we need to reduce by 10. So then we have relinquished slots that we have funding remaining also. So in essence, it ends up being about 1% of the total ABC budget that we have remaining. So what I have presented to you, we have a couple of things. One, on the chart, I tried to show you what their initial approved budget was. Then I listed those that we've added for the foster care payment that you just approved. And you, if you will recall, in April, I came to you with a list of teachers who met the minimum requirements, the credentials, or those that were in training. And we identified that there was a group of teachers that we inadvertently left off. So we wanted to go back and recognize them with the funding that was remaining. And then I also brought to you, as part of that three-million package, the idea about the innovation grants. And we talked about that the innovation grants covered literacy, the outdoor playground setups, STEM, and then also social-emotional. And there were programs that we were only able to partially fund. And so we thought that it would be better to go ahead and increase their funding, still not to the total amount that they asked for, but to go ahead and give them assistance to finish out their project. And so in essence, this is a total approval of $765,436 that we're requesting approval to use or redirect the funding from that that was remaining for the unused funds that projects did not, our programs did not access to fund these other items.
Any questions? All right. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I move for approval.
Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Reith. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
Thank you. I do want to share with you that this will be my last presentation to you. I too am going to retire come June 29th. And so I wanted to tell you, it has been an absolute honor to be a part of this for so long. I worked here in 1991 when ABC was coming about. And as I shared with Tanya, it's been an absolute pleasure to close out my career with ABC since that's where I kind of started. So it's been just an absolute godsend. So I appreciate all your assistance, questions. Just look at Ms. Zuck.
Compared your person.
And I will miss, I will miss your questions. And I still hope that some way, somehow, I will be involved in the process of early childhood because it's in my very core. So thank you.
Thank you for your service. All right. We are now on to item four. This, I'll turn it over to Ms. Blagg, and this is the Bullock case. And you should have received a packet. Everybody received a packet, okay.
Good afternoon. Simone Blagg, Attorney for Educator Effectiveness and Licensor. I'm here today for you to consider the revocation of a teaching license of Jason Wayne Bullock. This waiver hearing was requested by Jason Bullock, an educator who pled guilty to three disqualifying offenses while holding a teaching license. At that, at this time, I ask that if Mr. Bullock is present, that he step forward. I ask that if he has any witnesses, that they be sworn in at this time, please.
Great. If all of you who are not attorneys, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you. Proceed.
Would you like for me to review the rules?
Yes, please.
Under the rules governing background checks, the educator and the Department of Education each have five minutes for an opening statement. Board members may ask questions at any time. Each party will be given 20 minutes to present their cases, beginning with the representative of the Department of Education. The chairperson of the state board may only for good cause shown, and upon the request of either party, allow either party additional time to present their case. Each party will have five minutes to make an opening statement. To that end, I will proceed with an opening statement, leave of the chairperson.
All right, great. Ms. Bullock, you can have a seat, and we'll give you five minutes in just a minute.
Mr. Jason Bullock is a licensed educator. He holds a teaching license that expires December 31st, 2020. However, Arkansas law provides that the state board of education shall revoke the license of any person who has pled guilty to or been found guilty of the enumerated offenses listed in Arkansas Code Section 617410. Educator Bullock pled guilty to an enumerated disqualifying offense on June 21st, 2017. The department notified educator Bullock of the disqualification on February 26, 2018. On April 19th, 2018, educator Bullock requested a hearing. During the course of the presentation of evidence, I will discuss the documents before you, and with that, I yield the floor.
Ms. Bullock, you have up to five minutes for opening, and then we'll come back and you'll have up to 20 minutes for the case itself. So this is just the opening, opening presentation.
Thank you. And again, I just wanted to thank everyone for this opportunity to present my case. I'd like to get into detail about my seven years of teaching, the details of what happened and the crime that I committed, and how my life has gone since then, because it's been three years since that's happened. And so I'd like to just, you know, give you a brief detail of everything that... And so I'd like to just, you know, give you a brief detail of, uh, everything that has happened since, and then I'd also like to ask that my license be just temporarily suspended and reinstated upon completion of my felony probation, so.
Great. Um, and so, you're gonna lay that out in your, in your next section?
Yes, sir.
Is that your plan? Okay. All right, great. So you can have a seat, and then we'll hear from the department, and then you'll have up to 20 minutes for you and your witnesses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Educator Bullock, uh, holds a standard teaching license that expires December 31st, 2020. This is marked as Exhibit 1 in your packet. The Department of Education received information from public records that educator Bullock pled guilty to one count of possession of a controlled substance with purpose to deliver, a Class D felony, one count of possession of a controlled substance, a Class D felony, one count of possession of drug paraphernalia, a Class D felony, and delivery of a controlled substance, a Class A misdemeanor, on June 21st, 2017. If you will turn to ADE Exhibit 2, you will see the file marked police statement showing that this document was filed on June 21st of 2017, and it identifies educator Bullock as the defendant. On page two of that same document, you'll see his signature. The Department of Education's notice of the disqualifying offense was sent to educator Bullock, and that is marked as ADE Exhibit 3. Educator Bullock's request for a hearing and his written statement are marked as ADE Exhibit 4. And educator Bullock was charged with the disqualifying offenses on October 20th, 2015. The charging document and probable cause affidavit are marked as ADE Exhibits 5 and 6. Please note that the crime was committed almost three years ago, in August of 2015. On June 21st, 2017, educator Bullock was found guilty and sentenced to the court to the following, of the following disqualifying offenses. One count of possession of a Schedule 6 controlled substance with purpose to deliver, one count of possession of a controlled substance, and one count of possession of drug paraphernalia. The sentencing order filed on July 10th is marked as ADE Exhibit 7. And in that, it identifies educator Bullock as the defendant. The date of birth, though redacted on your copy, matches the date of birth that is in the department records. Offense number one is the Class D felony, where he was sentenced to 48 months of probation. Offense numbers three and four are both Class D felonies, and educator Bullock was sentenced to 48 months probation to run concurrently with these, with offense number one. Educator Bullock voluntarily, intelligently, and knowingly entered a negotiated plea of guilty to all three disqualifying offenses, as they are felony violations of the Uniform Controlled Substances Act. Arkansas Code Section 617-410 provides that the State Board of Education shall revoke the license of any person who has pled guilty to, or been found guilty of, an enumerated offense. The relevant section of the statute is attached as ADE Exhibit 8. And Section C 13 of the statute identifies felony violation of the Uniform Controlled Substances Act as a disqualifying offense. That concludes my presentation, are there any questions?
Is there a recommendation from the department?
The department recommends revocation.
Yes, I have a question as well.
Okay.
Uh, when the law says "shall," does that mean we have a choice?
You have the choice, because you have the ability to grant waivers and do what you would like.
Okay, I just knew that the one you read, it said "shall," not "may."
It's a, it's a "shall."
Okay.
It's a "shall," but it's, because you have the waiver ability, it's not a "shall shall."
Okay.
I understand.
Yes.
Is it standard for the, uh, recommendation just to always revoke, then bring to, to the board if we want to?
Yes, that is our standard.
Okay.
All right. Great. Ms. Zook, up to, up to 20 minutes for you and any witnesses.
Okay, thank you. Um, and thank you again for hearing my case this morning. Um, first, I'd like to tell you about, uh, my background as a teacher. Um, actually was a teacher and a coach for seven years. Uh, uh, coached, uh, football, basketball, soccer, and tennis, and I've, uh, taught math, history, keyboarding, career orientation. Yeah, I, I think that's it. Um, but I, I did have my certification in, uh, my middle, my middle school endorsement, uh, which says that I could teach all four core subjects, fourth through eighth grade. Um, I had my, uh, pre-K through, uh, 12th grade, um, a PE and health license, and my coaching endorsement, and a career orientation endorsement. Um, also, um, you know, I started my career at, uh, Mills High School, and for two years, and then I taught at, uh, Pine Bluff, uh, at Southeast Middle School for one year, and then was in my fourth year at Whitehall, when, uh, my crime was committed. Um, my, my mother, who's here today, is, um, in her 32nd year of teaching. Uh, both of her parents, my grandparents, are both retired teachers. Um, I actually just got married back in November to a teacher, and she teaches eighth-grade English at Watson Chapel. Um, so anyway, I've got a long list of teachers in and, you know, in and out of my family. Um, so, next, I'd like to get into, uh, um, what happened. Um, in August will be three years since, uh, my arrest date. I, um, it, it really started two years prior to my arrest date, when I was in a bad car wreck, and I got rear-ended in Pine Bluff. Um, the lawyer that I hired, uh, sent me to a doctor, uh, in Whitehall, and, um, uh, this, this doctor prescribed me a hydrocodone, uh, prescription medication, and, uh, you know, I was prescribed an, an abundant amount for, you know, several months. And, um, you know, by the time that I was, um, had resolved the, the case with my lawyer, and I, you know, lawyer wasn't needed, and we settled on the car accident, um, I physically was dependent upon this medication. Um, so, moving forward a couple years down the road, um, which was about four to five months prior to my arrest, um, in order to, um, afford my pain pill addiction, I started to sell marijuana on the side, um, while I was teaching. And, um, and then it, it caught up with me not very long, and, you know, I wasn't raised to be a drug dealer. Um, I mean, I, you know, I wasn't, I didn't grow up around that, it's just, uh, circumstances that happened with the wreck and going down that path of addiction, uh, led me to, uh, make a huge mistake. Uh, let down a lot of people in the community that depended on me, uh, my students, uh, my athletes. So, um, so anyway, uh, you know, that happened, I, um, um, I got arrested. The following three months, I did inpatient rehab in Michigan, uh, I got clean, and, um, I, I came back from rehab, and I moved to Conway to be closer to my daughter, and to get away from Pine Bluff area, uh, that I was, you know, knew a lot of people during my addiction. Um, so in, in order to get my, uh, rights to my daughter and get things how they were, um, I had to go to court, uh, and the judge, uh, the judge ordered me to take, um, uh, one drug test per week, in order, in order to see her for four hours a weekend. Um, I was also ordered to take three NA classes a week, and I was ordered to see a counselor for an hour once a week. And, um, I complied with that for, uh, right at a year. And, um, back in October, I was awarded, um, uh, you know, unsupervised, normal visitation, and actually, starting on Monday, um, she gets to stay with me for the entire summer. Um, after, you know, going eight months without seeing her, to seeing her for four hours a weekend, and now, full circle, back to having her as much as I had her before all this happened. Um, so I can tell you right now that my life has changed, um, drastically. I've been clean and sober for three years. Um, I know that, you know, my actions that led to me being here today are, um, very inexcusable, and, um, you know, I just am here today to ask that, um, you know, I get a second chance in education, uh, that's my passion. Um, I, um, you know, since this has happened, um, I was actually fortunate enough that Sylvan Hills Middle School offered me a job, and I taught math there for, uh, three months. Um, this was the school year after I'd gotten arrested, uh, before I was convicted of anything. And, um, they, um, you know, they, they let me teach there until one of the students had, I guess, Googled my name and found out about my past, and, um, so anyway, that was, you know, short-lived, but I was given that opportunity. And, um, since then, I've done, uh, remodel work, and now I'm a, a machine operator at Arkansas Graphics, uh, downtown. And so, um, you know, I've got, um, you know, I've got options, and I, you know, I'm a hard worker, and so, you know, I'm gonna do whatever it takes, uh, to, you know, have a successful future and a successful career, um, whether that's in education or not. I'm just here today that asked for the opportunity to go back to education in the future. Um, with the, the charge that I have, um, I agree to the Act 346, which, um, states that once I complete my probation, my charges will go away, they'll get, uh, sealed. And so it, you know, I was told that it'll be like they never happened. Now, obviously, you know, people can use Google and stuff nowadays, but, um, you know, in the eyes of, you know, the law, I will be completely rid of any, you know, charges. So, um, my probation can be anywhere between two to four years, if I complete all my fines, and, um, um, all my community service, which I only have 40 hours out of 120 hours of community service, uh, left. Excuse me. Um, then they can, my probation officer can recommend me be off probation after two years, instead of four. Um, so, um, uh, let's see. And, uh, I think that's... Yeah, um, and so, you know, I'm here today to ask that my license just be temporarily suspended, um, and then, um, you know, reinstated once I complete probation. Uh, and I also did bring a character reference. The, uh, the woman and the husband that I worked for doing remodel work, he's a principal at, uh, Julia Moore Elementary in Conway, and she is a speech pathologist, um, and, uh, they wrote up a, uh, character reference that I printed off for everyone. I'll give everyone a copy of that to look over. And, uh, I'm not sure how little the time, but...
You've got about 10, you've got about 10 minutes.
Okay, uh, I'd like for, uh, one of my parents to come and just speak on my behalf as a witness, if that's okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yes. Just, just identify yourself for the record.
Yes, I'm Glenn Bullock, I'm, I'm his dad, and on behalf of my wife Melody and myself, I'll thank Mr. Key, Chairman Bar, Commissioners Board. Um, you know, we're, we're just, uh, middle-class people that you read about and hear about that had no idea what a, what a functioning addict was. Uh, Jason moved back home with us to take a job in Whitehall, because he was gonna save money and buy a house. Uh, it was really because he was broke, uh, we didn't know that. He got up, went to school every day, he traveled on a bus to DeQueen, taking two soccer teams over there, he took a team to the state tournament in Harrison. Um, you know, nobody knew any of this stuff, the people at school didn't know, nobody knew. Um, it, it's just, it's, it's amazing, we've learned things that we didn't know, that we didn't necessarily want to know, but i- it's amazing what opioid addiction, what problem it is out there, and how easy it is to get caught up in that, and become that, and, and I, I mean, I've known people whose lives were ruined, and, uh, lost their jobs, lost their families, lost retirement. Fortunate for him, he only had seven years of retirement to lose. Uh, he had us to fall back to, you know, we're very proud that going from a coach and a, and a teacher who is an eighth-grade math teacher, was honored as Teacher of the Month by Channel 11, being nominated by his principal, to the Assistant Superintendent coming to our house to explain his options because of his arrest. Uh, but then he turns around and on his own found a rehabilitation center, went away, came back, is taking care of business, so, yeah, I submit to you that e- everyone deserves a second chance, and he's, he's sort of on his second chance. He's, he's going around to all the places because of the same thing that happened, to get a second chance. We also went a year without seeing our granddaughter because of him, and, uh, so it, it's affected all of us. Uh, but, you know, a- a- again, I just want to thank y'all for your time. Uh, now that he's returned to the person that he was back seven years ago, during those years, hasn't affected his ability to be a good middle-school math teacher, and a coach, and a science teacher, and all those things, and, and, uh, we were led to believe that the whole process, you go through it, you do what's expected, and it could come back. So that's, that's what we're hoping for today, and if you've got questions for him, I'll, uh, I'll sit down now, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it very much. Um, I, I do have a quick question, just on timeline. Uh, so your, your probation is sometime, somewhere between 24 and 48 months, from the, from the time of the conviction?
Uh, from the time that I started probation, which was July of last year.
July of '17.
July 2017.
Okay, so somewhere between mid-2019 and mid-2021.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Um, I will, uh, start with Ms. Wright, and see what questions, uh, she has, for either the department or, or Mr. Bullock.
Yes, no, of course. Uh, my first question is, uh, actually for the department, Ms. Blagg. Give you a second, walk up, thank you. So I, I took note, um, in, in the comments of, um, uh, of the defendant, that, um, it wasn't until his student Googled him, that the school district really became aware. Why, why did it take until that for the school district to, to know when, and, and not previous when they made the extension of an offer to him?
Well, that's a multi-part answer, um, but it really goes back to, uh, background checks, and our fingerprints at that point in time were not stored, and we were not participating in the wrap-back program, which allows the department to be notified of arrest of teachers, and allows us to follow those, the, those cases, um, so that we didn't know at that point in time. Um, I believe, I can't speak to the rest of that, because that was before my time, so I, I just started in January, so I don't know what happened before that part of things, and how that was allowed to.
And moving forward, if a school district did a background check, would this come up?
At this point in time, yes. If he completes his probation and does, and completes, there are other terms of his sentence, and he does get the Act 346 waiver, then it would be, it's sealed and only available to the criminal justice agencies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Zook?
Uh, yes, I can, uh, speak to the difficulty within the juvenile courts of, of parents regaining the ability to have custody, was a casa, or am a casa. Uh, and I think this is the courts that imposed this on him, and it's now the courts who have given him back, in a graduated phase, his rights with the child, uh, that that speaks very loudly to me, as well as the fact that you are taking responsibility, you're not making excuses, uh, you... You, uh, did the inpatient rehab. You are one of the fortunate ones because in very few percentage cases does that actually work. So, uh, that speaks well for you and your rearing. I'm impressed with the fact that you've done two, uh, three-fourths, uh, or two-thirds of your, uh, community service in, uh, less than a year. So, you know, the, the chances of you, uh, not completing the other forty hours and less taking up parenting this summer comes into the community service. But I bet you those grandparents would be more than happy to watch your child for that. One question I do ask is, uh, when you went to court to be able to go beyond supervised, uh, visitation, did the, did your child's biological mother, uh, have any, uh, regrets? Or did she go before the court to ask the judge not to let you have this?
Uh, this, yes, ma'am, the second one. She didn't want, uh, she didn't really want me to be any part of my daughter's life anymore after I'd had her every weekend and every summer since she was born.
But DHS recommended to the court because the judge, with just that one testimony, would not have moved forward. So, did, who, who spoke on your behalf?
My parents spoke on my behalf, um, but, uh, I, before I was allowed to see her, I had to take a hair follicle test. I had to get, um, uh, and I had to pay eleven hundred dollars to take a psych evaluation. And so, just through the testimony of, and all the, um, uh, the inpatient rehab, the outpatient rehab that I attended, uh, through all that, uh, the judge awarded me to see her for four hours a weekend upon that I completed all those necessary things every week. And so, I, and I, I didn't miss one single weekend. I, I passed, uh, thirty-six drug tests, um, you know, over the course of thirty-six weeks, uh, attended well over a hundred and fifty N.A. meetings, um, saw a counselor once a week, on top of working a full-time job and, you know, of course, getting to see my daughter on the weekend, so...
Were you in drug court and the, and juvenile court or just juvenile court?
No, ma'am, I, I wasn't in either yet. I hadn't even, uh, at, at the time that we started this court, I was still, my charges were still pending in Pine Bluff. I hadn't even had a resolution to my, you know, uh, legal charges in Pine Bluff yet, so...
But I meant when the, uh, juvenile judge, uh, made the decision that you could have your daughter, uh, for the whole summer?
Oh, yes, ma'am, it was just family court.
Family court.
Yes, ma'am.
And you, did you have to go through drug court at all?
Uh, no, ma'am, just all the drug tests and the N.A., it was seemingly drug court, even though I was told that drug court did less than what I actually had to do, so...
That's all?
Did you have a response to Ms. Wright?
Uh, I did. The school district knew about my charges before, uh, when I went in there to talk to them, uh, during the interview. I, I was upfront about everything. And since I hadn't pled guilty to any charges yet, they went ahead and hired me. And our agreement was whenever I had a resolution to the charges, we would go from there, whether I could still have the job or not. So, um, but with, with the student Googling my name, that happened before I got the chance to resolve my charges, so... Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of comments and then a question.
Okay.
I certainly, um, am impressed by your willingness. This is not easy. Uh, and certainly the changes that you've made in your life since the, the mistake are very commendable. I don't know anything about prescription drug addiction and, and the, the difficulty in getting permanently, I, I mean, I, I guess to some extent, there's always a, there's always a possibility for, for being addicted again. But my guess is time is your friend. The further you get away from these events and the more time you've established in terms of not returning to that behavior is in your favor. So, the, the question is, um, the, I had the same question that Dr. Barth did about probation and when it starts and, and the implications of that. But the question is, why are you here? Is there some benefit to you coming to us before you have completed probation? Why, I, I'm just surprised you didn't wait until that was done and then come to us.
My, my understanding was that my license was going to be revoked completely unless I requested a hearing asking that it not be revoked, but temporarily suspended. So, um, I, I understand what you're saying. I was just, I thought this was, uh, my only option, so...
No, it's my lack. So, if it, if it is revoked, are there opportunities? This is maybe one for the Department of Education. So, if we determine it's, it's not appropriate to, to, uh, to continue at this point, what are the steps that he would take to come back later on?
Believe there's no option. What's, revocation is permanent, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
That's what I needed to know, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, I, I too appreciate your transparency. And, uh, just, uh, in this process, I wanted to just, um, let you know how blessed you are to have parents to go home to.
Yes, sir, I know.
And, 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 and as we move through this process from, from, from the State Board, it's just important to move along this process. You have an accountability partners that hold you accountable each and every step of the way. And that, you know, when I sit here and, and I've dealt with many issues like this, but the fact that you can go home to your father.
Right.
And, and I, I don't know if you realize how special that is.
Yes, sir.
Because so many do not have that support system.
Right, and they've been supportive the whole way.
The whole, whole way, you know, and so, and that, and that's, that speaks volumes to me, uh, on, on knowing that you have accountability people there, but you learn and, and, you know, there's no experience wasted in, in, in the process. And I'm sure there's somebody that, you know, depending on how the board, that rules, that you can help, who, who, who've gone through, who will go through what you go through and there won't be any experience wasted. So, so, um, appreciate your transparency and sharing your, your, your journey with the board.
Ms. Newton, any questions?
This certainly puts a, a face on, on what is, uh, I think, an epidemic in, in, not just in Arkansas, but across our nation. And, and I, I appreciate your, your willingness to be open, uh, your willingness to take responsibility for your actions. So, I, I really do appreciate that. I do have one question for you. You mentioned several times the things that you had done in the past as far as treatment, especially the things to make sure that you got, um, visitation with your daughter. But you said that, uh, that visitation or, or you would be able to get her this summer. What is going to be your ongoing plan for treatment and, and to, uh, your support system to make sure that we don't fall back into some bad decisions?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and, uh, my, my wife, who is a teacher, we have, um, three kids between us. And I, I still, um, I still go see a counselor, um, you know, once every two or three months, and I still, uh, attend N.A. meetings. The further I've gotten away from this, the, you know, the, the less it is I ever think about going back. You know, I went to, I went to the doctor not too long ago. You know, uh, I was having, you know, pain and I was dealing with stress. And the first thing that I told the doctor was, I was upfront and I said, "I'm a recovering addict and please don't, you know, I'm gonna need something besides narcotics." So, I mean, I'm upfront with people. I have, I, I call my mom probably at least once every two days just to talk to her about what I'm going through. I mean, to be honest, my life's pretty good now. You know, I'm enjoying my life more today than I did when I was teaching because of the addiction that I was in. You know, there's so many lies and, uh, you know, stuff that you hide from people. Today, I'm just, I'm open and I'm honest and, um, you know, I'm just, I'm just happy overall today. So, um, you know, I would appreciate the opportunity to give back in education, but, um, you know, even if I don't, I mean, I, you know, I'm gonna do well in whatever I do, so...
Ms. Cochran?
Uh, just to be clear, I don't have a vote on the floor, as I stated earlier. But, um, the teacher in me can't help but recognize the opportunity for teaching and learning. I know it would be easy to, um, try to bury this, um, but if you do get the opportunity to work with youth in the future, I hope we'll use it to, to help them, use your experiences to help them. And then the daughter in me can't help but, um, thank you for your relentless pursuit of restoring your role as a father.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Then, um, thank you very much. Thank you for, for your, your candid testimony today. And thank you to both, both of your parents for being here, uh, today as well.
So, do, do they do a summation or are we...
Yes. Thank you, mister.
Thank you again. So, I'm going to go ahead and start off by saying that we recognize and applaud Mr. Bolick's actions, his willingness to take responsibility, his recovery, the steps that he's taken to get his daughter back and just overall improve his life. Those are awesome accomplishments. Also, just to address some of the questions that have, I've been listening to, the reason why Mr. Bolick had to come now as opposed to coming later is that once we notify him, the department gets notification, we notify him. And it, he has a timeline that he has to respond within because once we revoke, it is, there's no going back. And so, this is the only time that he has to complete this. If it was a different situation, we might not be here. But also, uh, Ms. Zook, in regards to the Shaws, um, six seventeen, four ten F says that, um, the, uh, State Board is authorized to grant waivers of licensure eligibility provisions so that you can ignore that C part, C thirteen. And so, I guess I'll go to the, uh, next statement, which is that the department has no objection to the suspension, um, as long as he completes the terms and has a letter, um, from a counselor saying that it's okay for him to return to school. And, let's see. Educator Bolick did plead guilty to these disqualifying offenses, but it was three years ago. He did teach for seven years of that time. He has made changes. He's doing what he needs to do to become and do better in his life. We do acknowledge that it, that his, the painful addiction, um, that led him to these actions. Educator Bolick has provided lots of evidence stating that he has had steady employment since the time of this incident, that he's provided character references both of his current employer and his parents. And he has demonstrated that he does not pose, he's attempted to demonstrate that he does not pose a threat to the health and safety of schoolchildren or personnel. The department would like to state that educator Bolick was found guilty of these disqualifying offenses and you do have the statutory authority to do, proceed however you would like, whether that be revocation or a waiver. And that to consider the age at which the time was committed, the crime was committed, the circumstances surrounding the crime or event, the length of time since the crime or incident, subsequent work history, employment references, character references, and other evidence that he's put forth. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Tevers?
So, again, back to the technical part of this. So, he would not be reinstated until his probation complete?
So, his, he could be suspended and then we, the suspension could be, like, if you suspended him today, it would be for three years to match up with the term of his probation. Whatever terms you would like, I can add to the order and get that to you this afternoon.
I was just curious, if, if we were to do that, then is there anything that compels him to come back at that point to ensure that he is, he's maintained his sobriety and that everything is good? Or no, we would, that, this is the moment that we have to make that determination?
Determine whether or not to revoke or...
Yes.
Yes, this is the moment to determine revocation. You can do suspension and have terms set forth in there that he'd have to complete and complete, request that he complete another background check to confirm there's been no other incidents. And the letter from the counselor saying that he's okay to return to the school. Those are options that, and stipulations that you guys have to, within your control. You're welcome. Any other questions?
No. And then he has five minutes to close as well. All right, Mr. Bolick.
I'd just like to reiterate again that, um, you know, I, I come from a family of teachers and, um, it's just been my passion. Growing up, I played all the sports. As soon as I went to college, I knew that I didn't wanna do anything but coach, you know, and, uh, and, and teaching came along with that. I just, um, I, I'm very passionate about it and I would like the opportunity to go back, uh, into education some point in the future. And, and that's what this hearing is about today. You know, like I said before, I'm, I'm happy with, you know, where I'm at today. And, you know, I'll walk it, I'll walk out of here with my head held high, whichever way the decision goes. But, you know, I, I do wanna come here and ask for that opportunity. And once again, I thank y'all for hearing my story and, um, uh, you know, being sympathetic to me standing up here and, you know, going into detail about everything that happened. So, uh, again, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Black?
I'm ready with a motion unless we need to discuss further.
Nope, you're ready to go.
Okay. First of all, uh, this motion is predicated, I did admire the fact that you didn't ask us to give you your license until you had finished your probation. I think that you understand that that helps our position as well as yours. I think you did a good job of presenting yourself, not only articulately, but in the manner in which you conducted yourself. And, uh, for those reasons, then I would ask the department to, um, uh, put him on suspension for the time. He can then notify you. Is that the way it would be when the probation is over or the courts?
It would need to be a suspension for the duration of his probation.
But since we don't know how long that'll be...
It's in the order.
Ms. Black, can you come on up? Sorry.
Does it say twenty-four to forty-eight months?
It says forty-eight months in the sentencing order.
Okay, but, okay, if, if his probation officer sent a note to the department saying he has finished because his community service is over, uh, is that allowed? Can we word it that way or do we have to do a time certain?
Yes, if we say that it's the duration of his probation, yes, we can have it that way. If he ends his probation at twenty-four months as opposed to forty-eight months, it would go ahead and he could be reinstated at that point in time.
Okay, Ms. Hollis, did you get all that? Okay, she has to write down her motions. Anyway, uh, that would be, my motion is for suspension for the duration of the, uh, probation and then once notified that his, uh, license be reinstated would be my motion.
Okay, and do you, no other conditions on that?
Well, as long as he's in probation, he's having to do all that. But if you, if y'all think it would be wise for us to stipulate as well, I guess I would turn to Dr. Owa to, for, uh, I shouldn't mention your name and then ask my question. Sorry. Teacher in me says, "Ask the question, then call your name." Should we stipulate the specifics of go to N.A. and, and do all this since he's under probation and having to do what that probation officer says?
If it's permissible for you, can I defer to Mrs. Reinhardt and, uh...
Anybody, whoever has an answer would be helpful. You may.
Thank you, Cheryl Reinhardt with the department. I believe in this situation, his probation would be taking care of drug testing and, you know, other activities that he has to maintain. So, completion of his probation, then I would add another background check when he's completed that just, although that would, um, cover, I mean, his probation would cover criminal offenses, at least another child maltreatment check if, at the very minimum, I would say.
So, Ms. Hollis, can you add that? So, I think what I'm saying is this, a, a letter from the probation officer once your probation is finished... your probation is finished, as well as successfully completing a background check, and, uh, then be suspended for that period of time, and, uh, then, uh, an opportunity to get your license back, uh, but please understand that, uh, if you have to come again, you will not find, at least within me, a sympathetic ear.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, second by Ms. Newton. Any further discussion of the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, um, yeah, we are, yes, we're taking a break. Um, now, is the, my question is whether the Gilbert family is here pre- present today?
Hi.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Dedman for the department. Um, the Gilbert family is present, um, both of the parents are here, um, also we have representatives from both districts.
Okay, um, I, I think we, I think we do need a break. Um, why don't, and we'll go ahead and grab, grab a lunch, I apologize to keeping the Gilbert family, uh, in particular, and the, and the, and the schools, but why don't we say we will return at, at one thirty-five? That'll give us thirty minutes for lunch, and, um, I apologize for, for the, for the delay, but the morning ran long.
Thank you.
And we're, we're upstairs in two o'clock.